All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting, the regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, the 2nd of September, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Here.
Scambalory?
Here.
Rosenbarker?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Bullen?
Here.
Piedmont Smith? Flaherty?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Sandberg?
Here.
Everyone present and accounted for. Here is a summation of tonight's agenda. We will be hearing minutes for approval. We will hear reports from council members, the mayor and city offices, including a climate vulnerability assessment report presented by Lauren Travis, as well as an update from the mayor, council committees, and reports from the public. We will hear appointments to boards and commissions. Legislation for first reading includes ordinance 2015 to rezone a 19.73 acre property from employment to residential estate regarding 2300 West Tap Road, Duncan Campbell petitioner. We will have a second period of public comment, and we will take up matters of council schedule. Fairly light agenda, if you ask me. Let's go first two minutes for approval. Is there anyone who has minutes for approval?
Yes, I move approval of the minutes from the regular session on September 4th, 2019.
Second.
We have motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on the minutes for, what was it again, March?
September 4th.
September 4th, 2019.
Yes. Okay, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yep.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bullen?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you all.
His minutes are approved.
Mr. President, I move approval of the amended minutes from September 16th, 2019. There were a few small revisions that were sent out.
Need a second. Need a second.
Second.
She.
Good motion in a second, Ms. Piedmont Smith.
I would do that. She wasn't done talking, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, before you explain the motion, you need to make the motion. That's all I'm saying. Go ahead, Ms. Piedmont Smith, please continue.
Well, I was going to add the minutes of September 18th, regular session, September 18th, 2019, as well. Those have not been revised. So I am revising my motion, I suppose. I wasn't really done making it, so.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the motion for the minutes of the 11th through the 18th? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion for the minutes of September 11th revised and September 18th?
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Isabel.
Mr. President, it's actually September 16th and September 18th, 2019.
I'm sorry, September 16th and September 18th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Scambalory?
Yep.
Rosenbarker?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bullen?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yeah.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes as well. My apology for interrupting the motion. We go now to reports from the mayor and city offices. We'll start with an update from the mayor on the COVID-19 pandemic and its response. Mr. Mayor?
Pardon me, council.
Sorry. I missed something else?
Go ahead, Ms. Parliamentarian.
Normally, we have reports from council members before reports from the mayor.
I'm terribly sorry. I am not on firing on all cylinders tonight. Let's start with reports from council members. Mr. Mayor, you're going to have to wait a second. I'm going to start with the member who is furthest from the front of the screen. That would be Councilmember Rallo. Do you have a report, Mr. Rallo?
No report, thanks.
Councilmember Rosenbarker?
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty? Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Just to please remember to wear your masks when you're out in public and cannot social distance.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
A report, thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambalory?
Yes, thank you. This coming Saturday, September 5th, at 1:30, I'll be holding a monthly constituent meeting. Just out of an abundance of caution, we're still meeting via Zoom, and you can find that link on my council webpage or at supercitycouncil.com. And most of our issues, most of our conversation will focus on District 2 issues, but certainly anyone is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have no report. With that, after we've concluded council reports, we go now to reports from the mayor and city offices. If I can read the stuff in front of me here. And now we hear from the office of the mayor. Mr. Mayor, would you like to report?
Thank you very much. Good to be with you all. Thanks for letting me have the chance to say hello. I want to do two things tonight with you. One is update on COVID, and two is a request on the local income tax. So first, it's been a little while since we've had an update on COVID. Significant actions with Indiana University, I'm sure you're aware, they've now quarantined about two dozen Greek houses, congregate living places due to positive diagnoses in those places at a significant percent. Definite increase in the positivity rate with campus and their data being included in state data now. I will note, as some of you may know, that the county health department has indicated they believe the local county positivity rate is moving around a little unreliably because of the way the state enters data. Particularly, they enter positive cases faster than they enter negative cases in order to get them into contact tracing, which means that the numbers are going to be bumpy. Our county health department would basically agree and conclude that we have seen a noticeable rise in positivity in campus-related, IU-related community, in particular driven by some pretty substantial numbers in these congregant living settings. The second point they would make, I think, is that there's not a commensurate or similar rise in overall community spread. The hospital data continue to be quite good in terms of hospitalizations and such, but the data are moving. It's very important, just another example, on campus, their on-campus residence hall positivity rate is good, is quite good still, about one and a half percent, it appears, compared to an eight percent or more average in the Greek houses. So there's a lot going on. Data is important to continue to monitor. We do that regularly with the university and health department and others. We have concerns about the weekend, the holiday weekends can be problematic. A reminder, for example, at Lake Monroe, under the Department of Natural Resources, they're actually subject to the state rules rather than our county or even city rules. I'm really pleased that we have taken the steps we have taken locally, both at the county health level and the city level. There's a lot to keep monitoring. I want to thank our police department, which has worked so hard with IU Police Department to maintain order in some of these gatherings. The very close collaborations continue on the health orders, on the messaging. Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, reminding people the importance of masking and physical distancing. Social gatherings, of course, have been limited to 15 here in the city. The jury is still out, I would say, on how we are going to do. We've certainly seen around the country different paths that communities and universities have taken. We're working very hard together to try to manage this, but we still, I would say, the jury's out. I'll give a very quick update on that executive order that limited gathering sizes since Friday, August 21st, when that order went into effect. We have received three dozen or more complaints. We're responding directly to those by the police. We've also received about 23, two dozen or so, requests for exemptions from the order. I want to let you know, we review each of those. Each one of those was given an approval for the exemption, and just for you to know, they are required, the engagement is really good. We require them to talk about masking and assure the masking and distancing requirements in those events. About eight of them have been engagement or wedding-related, about seven of them have been church Bible study, not services, those are treated differently, but church-related events, and then eight others. The request sizes range from 20 to 75, with an average of 31, and we've been pleased to have people engaging with us, to ask for exemptions and go through their protocols. I'll take questions on that, if you like. At the end, I'll move to my second point and try very briefly as well, to talk about the local income tax. Since mid-July, I talked about Recover Forward in three stages, which included one that I also outlined in a newspaper column this week about a local income tax request. There will be more details coming to the council in the next couple of days, but I am here tonight to request that City Council consider a resolution to go to the LIT Council, Local Income Tax Council, but adopt a resolution as a city council to adopt a 0.25% increase for economic development purposes in the local income tax. I'm asking you tonight to consider that in the next two weeks, to allow for the full calendar of review by other jurisdictions as set by state law. And I'll just mention four quick points tonight. One, in the face of the COVID restrictions and the recession that we're in, and racial and climate challenges, our government needs revenues to meet our communities' needs. We needed to help our underemployed and unemployed people get back to work, to help achieve a lower carbon future with more energy-efficient buildings and better transit, bike, and pedestrian options. We needed to help local farmers and local artists to thrive, and to help strengthen our social safety net and support more affordable housing. Indeed, we need revenues just to assure that we maintain basic services like public safety and infrastructure, sanitation, and upkeep and maintenance in the coming years. Point number two, we have capacity in our local income tax regime, as we are among the lowest income tax counties in our region. We are seventh out of the seven contiguous counties, the lowest income tax in our contiguous counties. We are 19th out of the 21 regional counties in terms of our local income tax. And even after this proposed increase, we will still be very low relatively among our neighbors, and we will also be maintaining plenty of headroom for future councils or others in years ahead who may need to pursue other revenue if needed. There's plenty of headroom to do that, so we're keeping a very prudent and modest level. Third point, the timing is important now. It's not clear whether Bloomington will have the capacity to enact such revenue after this fall. Perhaps, we may, and if the state legislature would offer additional options, such as passing a city-only income tax, that would be certainly welcome and something to consider that we could transition into, but there is a real risk that we cannot raise revenue in the future after this fall. So it is very important to determine our own future now. The state procedures for the local income tax require acting by September 16th to meet the statutory deadlines in the state law and to provide time for the other county fiscal bodies to conduct their votes. So fourth point, and in closing, I just want to urge the council to convene a special session next week to consider this proposal, this resolution, and to vote on the resolution by September 16th to proceed with this very important choice for our community's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will open up to questions from council members in just a second, but I will say that, you know, the administration has always, always has the prerogative to bring resolutions to the council. A resolution only requires one meeting, so they could have brought this resolution on the 16th, you know, without any special dispensation, because I believe that the council was going to want to discuss it at length. I, you know, concur that a special session is worth calling on the 9th, and so I'm certainly prepared to do it, barring any objection from my colleagues. But, so with that said, I'd like to open up the Florida questions from members for the mayor on either the COVID response or his request for a special session. Are there any questions from members? Seeing none, oh, sorry, Councilmember Scambalory, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Just a quick question, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that there were about 35 complaints about mask use, going back to your COVID comments. Were those for events? Were they for local establishments, both?
Those were primarily complaints about gatherings that we've gotten, that the IU Police and the Bloomington Police are kind of divvying up and responding to. I will say, I'm pleased that we're, I think, with collaboration with IU, we're seeing good work on those, but again, the jury's out, and it really is going to depend on how people behave over the next week or two or three, how we get through this as a campus and as a community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from members for the mayor? Seeing none, we'll take up the question of a new, I'm sorry, oh, Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, it's not a question, but I just, concerning the LIT, I did just want to comment and say that I think it's a prudent proposal, and I wanted to thank the administration for coming forward with it, because clearly anticipating our commitments in the future, it's really important that we consider this now, and I look forward to discussing it.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from members for the mayor? And again, we'll be taking up the question of the special session at the end of the meeting during our, the questions of council schedule. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks, Lauren Travis, for being here to do the good stuff with you, to share some important information. Thank you very much.
And with that, we welcome Lauren Travis to present her report on the climate vulnerability assessment of the city. Ms. Travis, hello, please go ahead.
Thank you. Let me pull it up really quickly. Okay. Thank you for having me today. As the mayor mentioned, my name's Lauren Travis. I serve as the Assistant Director of Sustainability here today to report to council in regards to our climate vulnerability assessment. The full technical report is on the website and was sent as part of the council packet. I will be providing an overview. If you're interested in greater detail, I recommend checking out the full report. First, I just wanted to begin with the purpose of conducting a vulnerability assessment, what it is, why we conducted one. So it is, in essence, a technical assessment of exactly how Bloomington's changing climate will affect its people, buildings, and infrastructure over the next decades. And this is really crucial because impacts and risk levels to people, buildings, and infrastructure will be disproportionate. So some areas of Bloomington, some groups of people in Bloomington are inherently more vulnerable and may be more adversely affected by coming impacts. And the third point is that anticipating these impacts are critical for long-term planning, promoting equity, and current and future municipal funding and policy decisions. And then I just wanted to overview, what kind of change are we projected to experience? If we look back, even in the last 30 years, there's been a 25% increase in heavy precipitation events, and annual precipitation year over year has increased 15% since it was first being measured. So with the increase in annual average temperature of about 2 degrees Fahrenheit, if current trends accelerate as they're anticipated to, summertime conditions in Bloomington in 30 years are projected to be more similar to conditions currently experienced about 330 miles further south. And in broad terms, those trends are warmer average annual temperatures, cooler, sorry, less cool winter months, increase in extreme heat days and heavy rainfall events, as well as increased time between precipitation events, so more variability in both temperature and precipitation. And then what hazards will we experience with greater frequency? And these are events with sufficient intensity to potentially cause loss of life, injuries, significant property damages, and disruption to commerce. So in the short term, based on the assessment in this report, we can expect to continue to have increased storms, floods, and extreme precipitation. And so in the right, you can see the table, the underlying hazard types are the ones that will be experienced in the short and medium term. In the short term, again, floods and storms being a particular concern. And then I just copied some headlines from the HT, because I wanted to note that while climate change may seem like something that is of concern really far into the future, it's not only the environment that will be of concern here. We are having threats to health, infrastructure, ecosystems, and social systems, and it's sort of these threats multiply. So the challenges we're having now that are public health-related with increasing weather concerns, it just exacerbates and causes challenges for the community. And to the point of how this is going to affect people, which is obviously a huge concern, extreme heat is really something that also is a huge risk to people by causing heat stress that can cause people to go to the emergency room, but then also experience energy costs, which is a challenge financially, and can sometimes cause people that are lower income to not be able to afford cooling, which is then another health concern. Flooding obviously causes property damage and health impacts. If your property floods, you can also have mold and subsequent public health impacts. Air quality impacts will impact people that are susceptible to asthma. And then another big one is nutrition insecurity. So as weather becomes more variable, there's crop impacts and therefore food price volatility. So again, if you're financially challenged, this presents another concern. And like I mentioned at the beginning, not all types of community members may experience climate impacts the same. And on the left, there's a chart that sort of shows what are we most sensitive to as a community, and some of them I've mentioned, but also mentioning power failure, energy costs. These are not things that you might think of immediately in terms of climate change, but if you look at types of people in our community that may be less able to rebound quickly as they're experiencing some of these weather challenges, vulnerable children, older adults, individuals with disabilities, let's say someone's on a ventilator and there's a power failure, that person is going to experience a power failure differently than someone that is not experiencing that health challenge. People that are economically stressed are going to be challenged with a lot of these different types of challenges. So extreme weather, flooding, you have less financial capacity to respond. And then due to, you know, historical discrepancies and also just inequities, people of color can sometimes be more susceptible to some of these risks. So to bring this more tangibly into what areas of Bloomington are most vulnerable, so some of these impacts that we mentioned before, they're not going to have the same geospatial distribution. And so while this map is shown by census tract, I also then included the council district just to make it a little bit easier to see for those watching. But in particular, Council District 3, based on this assessment, and there would be the highest proportion of community members as a percentage of the people that live in that tract that would be vulnerable to climate impacts. Council District 1, again, another about 4,225 members considered to be vulnerable, and District 5. So while not everyone in that census tract is vulnerable to these effects, people within those census tracts have attributes that would make them more vulnerable to these types of storms or climate impacts. Also, our buildings and infrastructure will be affected, which is also important for municipal planning, because as these things occur, they may be costly and affect the city budget as well. I thought I would mention a couple of these. So transportation and roads, with increased variability in temperature, there will be freeze thaw damage, which can cause impacts like potholes. So when we talk to the street department, as that happens, and you have to make an emergency response to it, that can have a financial impact as well. Land use planning, utilities has done a great job investing proactively in green infrastructure, but that storm water management and flood, surface flooding is quite costly. And then also, as the temperature increases, expecting more power outages and cost increases, as well as increased electricity demand as people respond to the temperature being hotter outside. We can also expect some tree loss. Not all of our public or private trees are suitable to an increase in temperature, so there will be some tree mortality as well. So I think when we anticipate these things happening, we can also look to what ways we can invest and become more resilient, and some of those are things that we're already doing. So we are working on increasing our tree canopy already. We have a higher-than-average percentage of tree canopy compared to other communities, but also the tree study that was completed by Parks last fall showed that if we were to plant and priority planting sites, we could work towards a maximum attainable canopy of 61% of our surface area. So that would be helpful for many reasons. One, we would reduce flooding impacts, it has shade benefits, and we could focus on those areas that are currently underserved from trees. One other approach would be to reduce impervious surface, so about 33% of our land acreage right now is pavement. That helps decrease heat island effects, especially in areas that are low-income, replacing that concrete with green infrastructure, more trees, more plants, and that will help impact or mitigate some of these impacts from happening or the severity to which they're happening. And then on the other side, community resilience, these are some concerns that are noted widely in a lot of conversations, but reducing housing burden as residents are cost burdened, then they have less capacity to respond financially, and also working on reducing exposure to health risks. So reducing exposure to particulate pollution from vehicles and traffic-associated air pollution. So this was a pretty high-level summary of the report. I wanted to know if you had any questions for me. I can turn to any of the slides, but also feel free to reach out as you review it, and I'm happy to continue a conversation on this. We are working on further climate planning to ensure that we have more specific and detailed plans to address these concerns moving into the future.
Thank you, Ms. Travis. Thanks for the report, very much appreciated. If you could unshare a screen, thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Travis from council members? Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and then Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you so much for this report. I was wondering what level of collaboration there is with the county, since, of course, we have interwoven vulnerabilities.
Yeah. So I've been working as well with the county environmental commission, and some of the councilors still look at common concerns. So the Environmental Resilience Institute at IU has been working on some joint planning resources. We have common, you know, emergency management resources. We have common decisions that are made in a lot of instances. So any information that we're collecting, I'm also being sure to share with the county where relevant, and looking to continue that collaboration moving forward. I think especially, we've looked at this instance of challenges in public health, you know, we're not an island, and we're going to be experiencing a lot of these things at the same time in the same way. So I think as we move forward, anything that we're doing that will be of use to them, I intend to continue to share.
Do they have their own assessment, or do they have one planned, or are they going to piggyback off of what you've done?
They're getting some support from IU as well, so IU is offering them some resources to complete assessment areas that aren't in common with the city. So we're sharing some work that's been completed by our department, and then they'll complete the areas that need to be completed with separate information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thank you for the report, Ms. Travis. Could you give us an update on when we expect the Climate Action Plan that's being worked on to be completed? And also speak a little bit to the balance of climate change mitigation versus adaptation measures within that, within that plan? I think I remember it being focused on both and adaptation, of course, being a little more relevant to this vulnerability assessment.
Yeah. So there was a pause and some engagement around the Climate Action Plan between March and June. We're hoping to get it completed by the end of the year and in front of council. It's basically in draft form, but we would like to get more input from key stakeholders as well, and feedback about some of the recommendations. In terms of the balance between mitigation and adaptation, I think the important thing is that regardless of whether we reduce our emissions to zero, we still as a community need to respond to some of these, you know, heat and flooding challenges. So I think that that's reflected also in, you know, parks and utilities budgets to proactively make sure that we're planting trees, that we're looking at storm water management. So the recommendations will be balanced across both. When I came to present the greenhouse gas assessment, we know that a lot of our emissions are related to buildings, and that was reflected in some of the recovered forward funding for energy conservation. So we're looking at buildings in the community as a whole, and how the city might support helping efficiency, and then hopefully subsequently, energy diversification, so we can reduce emissions related to that. And then obviously, ongoing investments in transportation infrastructure, aside from only vehicular infrastructure, will also help lower that overall emissions profile. So I would say that we're looking at it as a balance between both, because we know that that will be part of our long-term need.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, followed by Councilmember Sims.
Thank you, Ms. Travis. The question I have is, we're at, if we're about at thirty-eight percent of tree canopies, want to get to sixty-one percent. Can you, what does that mean to us? Does that mean X number of trees must be planted? Is, I'll let you go.
Yes. So, and I'll defer also to our urban foresters working on this every day. It's, we're working on both public tree investment, and then we'll also have to look at incentivizing private tree planting as well. So there's some neighborhoods across the city that have very few trees relatively, and then other ones are closer to their maximum capacity. So within the urban forestry assessment that was completed last year, there was a prioritization and goal per neighborhood. So it was, you know, we might be closer to reaching the canopy goal in a given neighborhood that has a lot of mature trees. And then there might be other places that maybe were frequently redeveloped that don't have that many trees at all. And so focusing the attention on the areas that need more will help us meet the overall increase. But there's going to be some areas that, like downtown, where you have a lot of buildings, so it might not be as realistic. But anywhere there's a unused, you know, surface parking lot, reimagining that as a place that could have more green infrastructure, if it's appropriate, will help that overall goal.
Yeah, I think the green space and the trees will certainly help mitigate the climate vulnerability we have. Is there some number of trees that that, does that mean to me?
Well, yeah, right now we have nineteen thousand public trees. I think in the next year, we're planning on planting around eight hundred, but you would have to check with Parks Department about that. And we don't have a overall goal, but I mean, we're looking at replacing trees that are no longer available, especially in tree plots, and then also planting new ones, which are the perfect example, is quite a few were planted there in the last, you know, few months.
Thank you. Very nice report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Travis, for that report. I really appreciate it. My question has to do in the category in your report that says people of color and limited English populations. And that was fairly well explained, in particularly, some of the higher likelihoods of risk experiences with people of color. But with limited English populations, it then says, though not specifically a person of color category, individuals with limited English frequently overlap with populations of color. And you gave a list of those populations, Chinese, Japanese, Korean, and Spanish. But what caught my attention was ten point one percent of that population, German, and eight point one eight percent French. And I guess my question would be, of those populations, German and French, are they of minority descent? And I also would like for you, if you can, just explain further a little bit, your rationale for adding the English, limited English-speaking populations to the people of color category.
Sure. So I think the vulnerability in that sense would be that a lot of emergency management announcements, or you know, if there was a particular instance, a required evacuation, if a lot of that information is provided solely in English and not in your first language, then you could be more vulnerable because you don't have information that's as accessible to you about how to respond to that risk. So if we had a, you know, flood evacuation, or another instance where it was not, that information wasn't very accessible to you, then you would be at higher risk of experiencing that. Again, that doesn't apply to every single person in that category. It can be a little bit difficult when you're looking at census information to a certain, what proportion of those people. So it could easily be an overestimate. I think that that's something that we can investigate further. One thing that was important in this report, though, was kind of trying to differentiate what types of risk might be more prevalent to certain types of people. And so I think that, given that sort of geographic disparity, working with social service providers and other people that are working directly with those populations, to try to get a better estimate of, okay, among the people that you're working with, are they able to access, you know, city and county information about emergency management in a way that's accessible to them? That's something that we can work on as a joint government to make sure that the way that we are explaining or communicating with the public about emergencies is able to be responded to by everyone in the population, not just people that English is their primary language.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering if in the future, and I know from a data gathering standpoint, it's probably more efficient to do that. But when I read that section, if it's not specifically separated, it gives the impression that people of color, and particularly, and I know that may apply to some of our Chinese or Japanese or Korean-speaking populations, or Spanish for that matter. But when we're talking about African Americans or Black people, it kind of lumps them together as if there's some sort of problem with accessing public information or hearing public notices. And I know that's not your intent. But if I, I hope that's not your, I know it's not. But if we're looking at that, you can see how that kind of confuses that category.
No, that's very fair. And I think that I revisit that and look at whether, especially with census information, whether that's obscuring the, you know, helpfulness of that section.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you for the report. Very, very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Rello?
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren, for the report. It looks to be really informative. I just had a couple of questions and a comment. One was relevant to local growers. It looks like in some ways, climate change is going to be an advantage in that it increases growing season by ten days. But the precipitation is going to be much more sporadic, and it's going to be times of drought and then times of heavy precipitation, which is, you know, damaging in two very important respects. And will this consideration be part of ideas of mitigating those things for local farmers so that we can, so that local farmers can grow, prepare to grow with those sorts of changes in mind? That was one question I had.
Yeah, I think the big key is even if the growing season is longer, there's less predictability. So in the past, you know, growers could say, I can anticipate my yield will be this amount and of this quality. I think that predictability is definitely challenged, and that will increase over future years. And so the ways in which we can support local farmers who are usually working on a very small profit margin, and it's a very challenging enterprise, will be important. And I think that's something to consider as we look at local food support, local agricultural support in the future, is that whatever challenges they're facing now, this will just be an additional one moving forward.
Yeah, I'm very interested in that topic, because I think there are ways in which we could, we could plan for it. By the way, there's, there seems to be an incongruity between the drought statistics that you might want to check out. And that was, according to a report on page nineteen, there's, it projected to be a hundred and five percent increase in the index of severity of drought. And then on page thirty-nine, it says a two hundred percent increase. So there seems to be some difference in scale. So my other question was, I think that it's really a great idea to increase tree canopy. So don't get me wrong, because I don't want to be critical to that goal. So a sixty-plus percent increase in tree canopy cover is a really good thing for various reasons, heat island, carbon capture. But I think that in an age of a biodiversity crisis, we should also think about other ways we can capture carbon, that is, prairie ecosystems, that would increase biodiversity that aren't reflected in forest ecosystems. And I wondered if that consideration was part of, you know, staff's, you know, general consideration, you know, the importance of biodiversity in the city and county as well, in ways in which we can mitigate climate, but increase biodiversity.
And I think Parks has done a really great job in doing that. We've been planning a lot of native vegetation. I think also, there's an importance in education. So I was speaking to a park staff member today that was talking about switching some of the education they'd done in person to virtual, about things like switching your lawn into a prairie ecosystem. So I think there might be different strategies for public and private land, but fortunately, a lot of people in Bloomington are very eco-conscious, very mindful of these things. And some of them aren't that difficult. So like you mentioned, a prairie landscape might be easier to maintain than trying to create a wetland in your yard. So I think that there could be a role in increasing maybe some, working with other nonprofits to increase technical assistance for, you know, long-term maintenance of different types of land use. But in terms of what we're doing with parks, to the degree possible, we're doing things like restoring, you know, stream corridors at Griffey, or helping restore some of the natural habitat that we already have, and trying to create green space wherever possible as well.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Further questions from members? First round questions? Councilmember Scambaluri?
Thank you, and thank you for the report. Ms. Harvers, can you comment, can you share where the public can find this report? I'm thinking it's somewhere on the website. And then I'd also be interested in hearing about any particular distribution plans you have for this report, or how some of our boards and commissions are going to be interacting with it. So if you could kind of fill in on that information for me, that'd be great.
So it is currently posted on the sustainability page, so anyone can access it now from there. It was also in the council pocket, so it should be on the council site as well. In terms of distribution, in the last month, I did a livestream Facebook brief version of this presentation to BCOs, and then I think it was last week to Environmental Commission. So both of those were streamed on the ESD, and then also Planning and Transportation page. I think that if there's opportunities for further engagement with this in particular, I think that, especially as it relates to further planning efforts, whether it's a stormwater master plan or Parks master plan, making sure that we're integrating the data collected here to reflect priorities in future planning as well. This was kind of the first phase. I'm planning to come back to council with our Climate Action Plan. I wanted to separate them, so it gave the opportunity for reviewing both what our climate risks and hazards would be, and some possible approaches to those particular concerns.
Great, thank you.
Further questions for Ms. Travis? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Travis. A little bit about Priority A, air quality impacts, goals responding to that. Reduce auto-generated particulate matter, tailpipe pollutants. I know cars add a lot of greenhouse gas emissions, right? It's like twenty-seven percent of our total. Do you, do we have any more specifics on that? I mean, I think right now, sorry, I don't know the specifics, but what do we say? Like in a few years, maybe we want to decrease our, our car use by two percent or something from like, I don't know the exact numbers, right? Sixty-seven to sixty-five? I'm kind of rambling. But do we know what we might do there to move along a little quicker or prioritize it? I mean, if it's one of these priority goals, too?
Yeah. So right now, we have an air monitoring site at Templeton, I think. So that's where we can get the most accurate data about what ozone and particulate matter readings are at a given point in time. However, we know that anywhere there's greater, you know, car traffic, we're going to, by proxy, also have higher air pollution. So while that, we don't have as exact measurements about that, you can look at people that live near the I-69 corridor, or live near a road that's heavily trafficked, are exposed to a greater extent to air pollution. In terms of plans to do something about that, it depends by vehicle class. So, you know, as Bloomington Transit is moving away from fuel-based buses and towards more of an electric or hybrid model, you're going to have fewer tailpipe emissions related to that. Similarly, if we reduce the number of car trips, vehicle miles traveled, that also then reduces air pollution. That's important because the impacts of air pollution are mostly local, and so therefore, the health impacts are as well. Fortunately, you know, Bloomington is not going to experience that as the same way that a larger city would. But it's still important that, you know, it's disproportionate based on what neighborhood you're living in, you're going to have worsened air quality impacts.
Thank you. And so, follow up, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, too. I want to scroll back to the vulnerable populations, but that just reminded me, is one of the populations, like folks who live on corridors or on bigger roads or closer to highways because of the extra vehicular traffic there? I mean, I think they're more at risk for like greater health problems.
I think in, within the report, there was a section that was labeled at-risk workers. That's also people that are working outdoors primarily. And so that, it's looking at, you know, if you have work that requires you to be outdoors, as it gets hotter, you will also then suffer heat impacts. I'm not sure if, you know, proximity to vehicular corridors was, you know, parceled out as a component of that, but I can check for you.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from members for Ms. Travis? You got the full litany there. Thank you for the, the report. Much obliged. We look forward to seeing it circulated to everyone as a matter of great importance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We now move to the next item on our agenda. If I can pull it up here. We are going to council committees. Are there any reports from council committees? See, now we go to the public. We have set aside twenty minutes for public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in Zoom, or type into the chat, where you will be recognized by the meeting host, Mr. Lucas. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers for public comment tonight? Yes, I believe first up, we have Randy Paul, who should be ready to comment. Okay, you'll have five minutes.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yes, please go ahead.
I just want to take a minute and comment on the election board meeting that was held yesterday. You know, I've been before the council, and before virtually every government body, talking about accessibility. And while it started in April, where it seemed like we were not going to be compliant at all in terms of voting sites, their meeting last, yesterday, showed me that within that short period of time from April to August, they accomplished a great deal. And what I saw from the election board was not only technically trying to get sites accessible, but they really did understand how important it was for people. I've not, this may sound not great, but I've not seen this much accomplished. not great, but I've not seen this much accomplished from April to August in the last ten years. Within that short period of time, there was just a complete turnaround. Uh, and I want to thank them for their efforts in terms of what they've done. You know, I'm reminded of the statement, you know, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. It's not perfect, you know, are we totally hava compliant? No, but during a pandemic and dealing with what they are, looking at what they had to deal with, and particularly what meant the most to me is the efforts they put into it. Uh, I think they did just an outstanding job for the time that we're in. Uh, hopefully we can improve on that um in the future. I would encourage anybody who um has a disability to apply to vote absentee and do that early. Two of the criteria to vote absentee is one, age sixty-five or over. The other one is just a disability. And for election law, disability is not defined. So if the person feels like they are, have a disability that prevent them from voting or they feel at risk because of the coronavirus, uh, they can apply by getting absentee vote. And I would encourage, encourage them to do that. But I want to make sure that the election board got the credit that they're due. And that's all for tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Further members of the public who wish to speak? Mr. Lucas?
Yes, next up we have Greg Alexander.
You'll have five minutes, sir, please go ahead.
Hi, thanks, I'm Greg Alexander. Um, I just wanted to draw your attention, uh, about two weeks ago at the preliminary budget hearing. Um, the Director of Public Works said that um, that they were repairing uh one thousand one hundred linear feet of sidewalk between Fourteenth and Seventeenth Street on North Madison Street. And, you know, that, that really interested me because I, I live there. Um, so I went to Kleindorfer's and I bought one of those infinite measuring tapes. It's a, it's a wheel and it's got a counter on it, so it never runs out. It's pretty clever, I'm real excited about it. I went up and down my street um between Fourteenth and Seventeenth. And on the west side, there's, uh, they just finished about, um, about a week ago, they just finished. Um, there's about a hundred and fifteen feet of new sidewalk on the west side of the street. And on the east side of the street, there's a hundred and three feet of new sidewalk. And that's um across four segments overall. So they're really short little segments that have been replaced. So the total new sidewalk is two hundred and eighteen feet. And, you know, I, you can make so much out of the, the accuracy of a statement or just the fact that two hundred and eighteen feet of new sidewalk, you know, we really could use eleven hundred new feet of sidewalk. Um, I went back and watched that again to, to make sure that was really what he said, and that's really what he said. And I, I just, I don't, I don't know how to make progress against something like that. But gosh darn, we could use a, a little bit of sidewalk maintenance, even though we just had um four tiny segments replaced. Um, I'll, I want to talk about something a little, actually probably more important right now is uh this local income tax issue. We, we, I, I wondered you for two different reasons to really focus um and make clear that you're focusing the, the new income tax on transportation, specifically on the bus system. And gosh darn, wouldn't it be nice for us a little bit for sidewalks too? Um, because transportation is, is a key uncontroversial function of government. Um, you know, if you look at how we fund car projects like car emergencies, um, we, we pull out all the stops. That's the highest priority instead of government is transportation. We do that before we do any like kind of social funding or anything, that, that the number one priority for the local budget. You know, if, if like Third and Lincoln, if the, what do they call it? The big dig is, is caving in, that's fixed right there, no matter how much uh we have to spend out of the general fund and emergency funds with, and sidewalks deserve that kind of treatment too. Uh, the bus deserves that kind of treatment, the bus should be a funding priority. And so we, we shouldn't put that behind something else, you know? We, we, we shouldn't put that behind, you know, a, a kind of a vague recovery plan. And the second reason you guys should really be explicit about it being for transportation is that we have, we have a, an optics problem. Um, the mayor has, has a real distinct tendency, you know, he comes from a background of, of public private finance, of using tax breaks to make money for private corporations. Um, and to, to, to then greenwash it or make it look like a, a social good. But fundamentally, it's about making money. And if you, you see this again and again, you know, uh, the county commissioner or the county council, which I believe is going to get some sort of indirect vote on the, on the tax committee, they, they, the, the convention center has just really given people a bad feeling, you know? But you look even at like the Solarize Initiative, that wound up, he selected an out-of-town contractor that did a poor job uh in a lot of instances. And you look at, at like, at pay-to-play developing where he had staff coming and lying to you and saying there are sidewalks where there aren't, and that's why we should allow this building here. You know, that really mattered to me and it, it looks bad. The mayor has done this again and again. He likes to have a closed-door meeting with a couple guys in suits and then come to you guys and, and tell you what's going to happen. And if, if it looks like the local income tax is just a slush fund for whatever kind of feel-good project the mayor and whatever private interest want to get involved in.
Thirty, thirty seconds.
Thanks, then it's going to be really a problem getting that, getting community support or getting support from, from county officials. And I just urge you to make it really clear what you want to spend the money on. And please spend the money on, on bike, pedestrian, bus, especially bus transport. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Yes, next up we have uh Jana Arthur, should be ready to go.
Please go ahead.
Hi, guys. Um, I just wanted to say a few things. One thing is that I'm really hoping that both the city and the county councils, as well as law enforcement, E M T and dispatch, will sign on as quickly as possible to the Black Lives Matter anti-racist training. It's very appointment, uh, important right now, especially given Chief DeKoff's speech where he had first said that there is not a racist thought in the police department. Um, I'm very happy that he did address that institutionally, all police departments are units that keep poor people and people of color down. And I think that's a good step in the right direction. I just think that the local B L M anti-racist training uh is very necessary. I would also urge councils and any sort of lawmakers um or political figures to declare racism a public health crisis, especially given the rally that was here on the twenty-second, um, the Back the Blue Rally where two black men ended up in the emergency room because they were attacked by people. Um, so racism is definitely a public health crisis. Um, and there are members of the community that are working to develop all sorts of community response teams. And I would like to urge you guys to take some of the thirty million dollars approximately away from the police departments and reinvest it in the community because the root of crime is poverty. And there, it's just getting worse with COVID. And I think that we need to invest some of this money in building strong communities because the police are not needed in strong communities. I yield my time, thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment, Mr. Lucas? Is there anybody else who has typed into the chat or raised their hand?
No, I don't see any further requests.
Okay. Uh, that will be it for public comment for the first round. We'll go now to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any from members? Seeing none, we'll go to legislation for first reading.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty fifteen be introduced and read by title and synopsis only by the clerk.
Second.
Your motion is second. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce and read uh ordinance twenty fifteen?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenberg?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Samberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Scambaluri?
Yes.
Thank you.
The ayes have it, uh, thank you. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Yes, ordinance twenty fifteen to rezone a nineteen point seven-three acre property from employment to residential estate regarding twenty-three hundred West Cap Road, Duncan Campbell petitioner. The synopsis is as follows, ordinance twenty fifteen rezones nineteen point seven-three acres from employment to residential estate.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. And uh, I have uh, uh, referred this legislation to the Land Use Committee, which shall uh, uh, take it up starting uh next week on the ninth. We go now to, is there any other legislation for, for first reading? Okay, seeing none, we go now to additional public comment. If there's anyone who's not yet spoken on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, we set aside twenty-five minutes for a comment. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom or uh type into the chat so that Mr. Lucas can see that you're interested in speaking. First call? Second call? Mr. Lucas, is there any, anyone who is uh asking to speak?
Not that I see.
Thank you, we'll go now to matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas, uh, can you give us a rundown?
Sure, a, a few reminders and then a few items that the council may want to, to act on. Tomorrow evening at six P M on Zoom, uh, the Jack Hopkins Social Services Funding Committee will meet uh for the first time to discuss a second round of funding to be uh distributed uh hopefully before the end of the year. That meeting uh is available via Zoom. Uh, the link is available on the council website for any members of the public who want to attend. That is a public meeting. Um, the committee will be discussing the process uh, uh, that it will use to uh, to consider uh funding requests for that, that newly uh granted uh funding source. So uh, this Friday, there is a council work session scheduled. Uh, the only item that um the council uh would hear about at that work session uh may be the mayor's uh local income tax proposal. I uh suppose I'd want to ask uh for a show of hands on council members who'd be interested in attending a work session on that item.
And yes, we'll have a majority.
I'm seeing enough that I believe we'll go ahead with that work session as scheduled. There is also a meeting of the uh council's administration committee uh scheduled for next Tuesday, September eighth at five P M uh that I wanted to bring to the attention of the council. Uh, the agenda for that meeting is uh still being uh discussed, so uh possible topics, um, I, I don't, I don't even want to get into that right now. So uh, uh, there, there's a plethora of issues that the committee might take up. So um, you also heard the request from the mayor to schedule a special session for next Wednesday. A special session can be held on the call of either the council president, uh, the mayor or three council members. Um, I believe Councilmember Volin indicated he'd be willing to call a special session. I don't know if the council wants to uh, to vote on that. Certainly, uh, the president or the mayor calling a special session is sufficient to, to schedule one. I don't know if there's any discussion needed there.
That's where it's going to be.
Make a motion.
Yeah, just a question as to how that would be scheduled relative to Land Use Committee, if Land Use meets next Wednesday.
My inclination is to schedule Land Use Committee first. Yeah. So uh, the, but, you know, I'm open to whether that's a six-thirty or five-thirty meeting. Uh, that's up to the, to the chair and I'll be consulting with her. Yeah, but, you know, I mean, if there's a motion tonight, I'll certainly entertain it. Councilmember Rallo?
I'd like to make the motion for a special session.
I mean, there's no need to, we're, as long as there's no objection to it, I can call the special session, so.
I don't know if it's your preference, but you stated.
No, 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 I, I, I do, I am, I, I, I am calling for the special session. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear earlier, um, unless there is an objection to that. So uh, which will be for the night. And again, uh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, um, I would like uh to hold the Land Use Committee meeting starting at six. And um, I think an hour would be enough for that.
Okay, um, just in case though, uh, would, would that, that would put us at seven fifteen, we would need some transition time between meetings.
Maybe seven thirty, just to be safe.
Okay, so we would call the special session for seven thirty next week with Land Use Committee at six. Uh, if there's no objection to that. Okay, Mr. Lucas, would you continue?
The last item is a uh suspension of the rules that the council adopted uh way back in a different world in uh, in March of this year. This was shortly after uh standing committees uh were, were created. And uh, the council on March fourth uh unanimously adopted a uh motion to suspend certain rules under a local code to give the uh council president certain scheduling uh authority uh for, for standing committees. And um, that motion extended until September the first, which was yesterday. And so council staff is recommending to extend that suspension of the rules to the uh end of the year. Uh, one of the possible topics for the uh administration committee meeting on, on Tuesday may be some updates to Title II, uh, including uh scheduling matters. So um, to ensure that the president can continue to uh provide some predictability in scheduling standing committee meetings, um, there is a draft motion that I've provided uh that is uh, uh, something council staff recommends.
Is there a motion?
Yes, um, Mr. President, I move to extend the suspension of the rules under Bloomington municipal code two point zero four point two five five and two point zero four point two seven oh until December thirty-first, twenty twenty, to give the council president in consultation with the vice president and the various committee chairs, the authority to approve the agendas and starting times for meetings of council standing committees. The president shall also have the authority to refer legislation to the appropriate committee before the meeting at which the legislation is introduced for first reading. But such a referral may be changed by a motion approved by a majority of the council when the legislation is introduced for first reading.
Second.
Motion in a second, thank you. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion on the motion, uh, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion to extend the suspension of the rules.
To unmute myself, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Samberg? Dang. I'm sorry, abstain. Rallo?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
That vote is eight zero one, so uh that suspension of the rules will continue through the rest of the calendar year. Thank you. Uh, is there any other business, Mr. Lucas?
No, I just thank you for that, and I don't have any other items of, of council scheduling to address.
Okay, thank you. So just to reiterate, tomorrow at six P M, Hopkins meets for a second round of funding meetings. Friday at noon, council work session. Uh, Tuesday, the eighth at five P M, meeting of the administration committee. Uh, six P M, September ninth, meeting of the Land Use Committee to take up first readings from tonight. And uh, at seven thirty next Wednesday, a special session. Uh, is there any, are there any final announcements from members? If not, I hear motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Uh, we are adjourned, thank you all very much, have a good evening. Good night.